Almighty God, we thank you for this day that you've given us and for the nice weather. Father, we just thank you for that. We thank you for getting the school off to a start. Father, just continue to protect the school corporation, all the business that we take care of, and give us safe passage as we travel home. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, board, I'd like a motion on our agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Got our motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion on our last meeting's minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as attached.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Time for public comment. State your name and address for making your comment and limit your comment to three minutes and it must be non-personnel in nature. Any public comments? Board comments? All right, recognitions.
All right. Well, this month, the man, the myth, the legend. We want to take some time to recognize Jeff Layden as our superstar staff member this month. He has had a really stressful summer. And this time last month, we were still wondering, is it going to happen on August 4th and 5th, when teachers and kids came back to the building? He had a lot of long days, a lot of hard conversations with contractors. And he's still in the thick of it, to be honest, but he's done a tremendous job. Every having every room in this district touched in some capacity with new construction, flooring, casework, total renovations in other parts of the building. It's just tremendous. It's beautiful. And I want to recognize Jeff Layden for all of his work towards that. Congratulations.
You have a speech?
Yeah. For sure. For sure. So, congratulations, Jeff.
Any others?
That's it.
Super tense report.
All right. I have a really exciting, fantastic, fantastic updates for you this month. We have had a tremendous start to the school year, super successful. Really, as a result of everybody coming together. I have some pictures of opening day. I was able to be at Howard in the morning for students arriving. We also had staff at the elementary school for kids arriving. Just seeing kids running up to staff members that they remembered from last year. It was so encouraging and kids were happy to be back in the building. At the middle school and the high school, we had visitors from the Tribune there to do a really great positive story in the newspaper on our new sixth grade addition. And the building is beautiful in spite of all of the, some of the raw edges on some things. The building really is beautiful and kids are back at it and doing tremendously. So I am so proud of our staff for navigating some of the little hiccups that naturally come along the way for a construction project like this, but great things are happening in our classrooms. I also want to give a little shout out. I asked all of the principals to send me pictures. And this picture came out to our staff at the middle school. And Mr. Bisher asked the staff, tell us, let's do a caption contest to tell, what's the best line, what is Mr. Miller thinking? And so some of these were quite humorous that I wanted to share. Mr. Burkhalter, why in the world did they let my stunt double move over from Howard? Jeremy Snyder, coaching basketball was never this hard. Lindsay Bullhopper, hmm, that joke played better in my head, especially in front of middle schoolers. Laura Cash, oh man, I already forgot what I was going to talk about. And the winner, if you got some chocolate from the office, I know it's the first day, but which one of you took my hair from Pam Miller? And this is just a silly little addition, but it does speak to the culture that we have in our building where we can laugh and joke and enjoy one another as colleagues and friends in the building. And it's just, it's, it's good to work in a place like that. The next thing that I want to recognize is we have a new staff member with us tonight. And during the personnel consent items, he'll be approved. Mr. Mike Goodrich is here with his family and he is our new athletic director. We're very excited to welcome him on board. Tomorrow is his first official day. And he comes to us from Carroll, but he is not a stranger to Northwestern. He has been a teacher, varsity coach, and is, lives in our, lives in the Kokomo community. So we're really pleased to have him back and know that he'll just be able to step right in and, and carry on the good things that are going on. So Mike, do you want to stand up and introduce to say anything?
Be back here.
Yep, thank you. Excited to have you on board. The next small piece of an update. So this week, we had some really exciting news hit the press. The state of Indiana released our third grade I read results. And we had phenomenal results. Ninety-nine point three percent of our third graders passed that test. We were number one in Howard County for all third grade. And even more impressive, we were fourth in the state. And in fact, the three other schools that were ahead of us tested way fewer students than we did. So I thought that was a testament to the hard work. I want to thank Tiffany Myers, Jordan Nelson. Hold on, I gotta think. Jody Schoolman and Robin Dill for all of their hard work in terms of what they do for kids to get them ready for that test is tremendous. And it's one-on-one, sometimes it's personalized, it's data collection, and they carry that out with fidelity. So really proud of our staff for that. And just if you see them out and about, congratulate them. We're planning a celebration at each of the buildings so that we can honor the staff and those kids for the hard work and, and great results. That is all that I have for my update. So we can move on to the next items on the agenda.
Wind energy?
It's in your packet.
The wind didn't blow enough, did it?
Yeah.
Right here. We, we are dealing with a little bit of an issue with our turbine right now. So we have a part that is not functioning correctly. So I believe the end of July, I want to say the last three days in July, the turbine was down. It has actually been down all of August so far. The part has been ordered from Germany and when it gets here, it will be replaced. But it has something to do with the pitch system, so the turbine's not able to turn right now. So luckily, July, August is usually our low production months anyway. So hopefully not a huge impact, but I did want to make you aware of that.
What was the cost of that?
I don't actually know the cost yet. We've Power Grid Partners is our, our company that does the work for us, and he has not gotten me the quote yet. So usually that means it's, it's reasonable. Anything that's, that's super expensive, he, he gets ahold of me, but he thought he had something on the shelf and he could replace it right away. They didn't have one, so they had to order it and they're coming to replace it, so.
And they do the install too?
Yeah.
The bus inspection report.
Yep. So bus inspection results from June of this year. As you can see, we did a wonderful job again. And when I say we, that would be Matt Gray and Brian Schiefer who work on our buses. Last year, if you remember, we were at a hundred percent, which was the first time we'd ever done that. Matt was extremely disappointed this year that we are only ninety-six percent. We did have one bus that had a small air leak and it was repaired before the state trooper was done inspecting that bus and then it subsequently passed at that point. So you can see our results. Much like our I read results, we are number one in Howard County, so.
We love that.
Any questions? Okay, we're ready for CFO reports.
Okay. This month, you have Camden CFO reports in your packet, just to kind of give you a big picture snapshot of our main accounts, our education fund. We have just finished up the seventh month of our fiscal years. So we are right at about fifty-five point seven five percent of spent, spent in that budget. And then for operations, we're at forty-five point three one percent spending for our budget. So doing well. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to entertain those.
How did we end up on student count?
Student count right now. So we are, last year, we built our budget on seventeen seventy. And well, we estimated that's what we would build our budget on. And we're hovering right at eighteen hundred, like eighteen oh one. So we're, we're pretty happy with those numbers. Yeah, we're pleased with ADM right now.
We need a motion for our CFO reports.
I make a motion to approve CFO reports as presented.
I second that motion. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do our payroll claims.
Okay, in your packet, you have two payroll claims for this month. So for the past month totaling nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Need a motion for our payroll claims.
Make a motion to approve the payroll claims?
I second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. AP claims.
Okay, so our accounts payables from July fourteenth through August fourteenth total three million, two hundred thousand, six hundred twenty dollars and forty-six cents as presented in your packet.
We had already hit the maximum interest we could get on the CD, right? Thanks.
Assume we're holding steady on the construction funds as far as what we have and what's needed to be paid by the end and all that.
We've probably pretty much passed the major stuff, are we not?
Yeah, I need a motion on the claims that were presented.
I make a motion to approve AP claims as presented.
Second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. ECA report.
Okay. In your packet, you have the reconciliation for our extracurricular accounts that are at the high school and the middle school. And those accounts show a balance of two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And they have been signed off on by our building treasurer and principal.
And need a motion for our presented ECA report.
Move we approve it as presented.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ready for our personnel consent.
Okay. So I will go through all of these and then we can, we can vote on them at the end. We have quite a few additions to share with you, especially for our non-certified staff. But we did have some resignations. Amanda Trot was an instructional assistant, as was Keisha Hickey and Molly Lovelace. They, those instructional assistants did resign over the summer. We have two certified staff teachers who did put in unexpected resignations towards the beginning of the school year. Jared Dowling at the middle school, teaching PE. We have posted for that position and are holding his contract for thirty days until we can find a replacement. And then Amanda Paget, a teacher at Northwestern Elementary. She is returning to her hometown of Rossville to take a position there. New hires, we have a number of non-certified staff. Charisma Lewis at Howard as a kindergarten instructional assistant. Dominique Elts at Howard as a special education instructional assistant. We're excited to welcome Lindsey Butts into the high school guidance department as our new secretary there. Rusty Spiker at Howard as a pre-K instructional assistant. Teresa Carlson at Northwestern Elementary as a special education instructional assistant. Catherine Betts at Northwestern Elementary as a special education assistant. Savannah Markley, a former student at NES as an instructional assistant. And then we also have Brooke Walter at the high school as a special education instructional assistant. And Lisa Gray, not a stranger to our district. She is a one, we're recommending her as a one-on-one instructional assistant at the secondary level. We do have a couple of certified staff members that we are recommending for hire at Howard. Melissa Burkhalter, we are, she is taking the third grade position and she is replacing Ashlyn Lovelace, who resigned at the end of last school year. And then at Northwestern Elementary, third grade Hannah Rosado, who is returning to us after moving out of the community. She and her husband are back. And we're excited to have her back in that position. And she is replacing Amanda Paget. Of course, we have Mike Goodrich on your recommendation list as well as the new athletic director. We also have a couple of transfers for your consideration. Cindy Hughes moving from Northwestern Elementary as an instructional assistant to the middle school as an instructional assistant. And then Bill Walters, he is recommend, he's currently on second shift custodial to recommending his move to the lead second shift custodian at Northwestern Middle School. And that is all of our personnel recommendations.
All right, we need a motion for our personnel items that were presented.
Make a motion to approve personnel items that were presented.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our ISU affiliation agreement.
Okay. We have a student teacher, also a former student, attending Indiana State University. And we have not had an ISU student with us as a student teacher for a while. And their university does have a memorandum of understanding that basically is just an agreement between school corporations and the university to host those students. It entails background checks and supervision. And so we are happy to entertain that and would ask for your agreement. It is a three-year agreement so that we would have student teachers from ISU joining us in the future.
Any comments or question on that? Then, did you, we were just talking about.
We need to go back and do the other ones.
Well, did you, did you read, yeah, did you read all the personnel?
No, I did not. I didn't. I stopped at our, our at, at features and instructional.
If you want to just read those, because we voted on as consent, so I think that's okay, but.
Yep, I sure can. All right. So for substitutes, we are recommending Allison Torren, Donald Garner, Lori Schuler, Harold Beal, Danielle Michael, Lauren DeGraff, Lindsay Thomas, and Kayla Meacham, as well as Sarah Graham, who would substitute as an instructional assistant. Then we have a number of extracurricular coaching assignments. We, most of those are mentor teachers and things that have already been agreed upon in the CBA. So for mentor teacher, Robin Dill, James Gish, Lindsay Bullhopper, Angie Cannon, Sean O'Neill, Amy Hale, and Hunter Clark. We are recommending Stephanie Collins as the yearbook sponsor at the, at Howard Elementary. Student council sponsors at Howard, Kaylee Malson, and Micah Caddick. The detention supervisor for the middle school and the high, high school, Jared Tredway. NEO art and instructional instructor is Brenna Royal. Team leader at third grade for Howard, Melissa Burkhalter. Middle school tennis coach Rochelle, Rachel Timmy, middle school tennis assistant Cindy Sparling. Academic coaches for math bowl, Jessica Johnston, Kim Maynard, and Amanda Russell. Middle school football coach for seventh grade, Ryan Fisher. The conditioning coordinator for the fall sports season, Derek Alexander. Boy soccer assistant coach, Craig Rose. Middle, uh, football middle school coach for eighth grade, Brady Henry, assistant middle school eighth grade coach, Jared Tredway, and voluntary assistant Sean Day for your consideration. Then the last item on that personnel, we have some lead requests. And that is for Brenna Royal. She is going, planning to take her maternity leave starting October sixth.
Okay.
We had the preparatory period. We had the purchase of the prep period.
Yes. So I don't see that on board docs and it was on board docs earlier, item L.
I, I have it on mine.
Okay, it's not showing up on the.
Page for us.
Yeah, page.
It's age. Oh, it got moved. I see. Okay. Sorry about that. It's on, it's at the end of my list. So in that item, we have a unique situation. It's a good problem to have. We have extremely large classes for our eighth grade and our ninth grade students. A bubble of kids that are about twenty-five more kids in each of those grade levels than we're used to. Typically, we want to offer middle school, middle school students, high school credit if we can in language, math, and PE. But we have a limited number of Spanish teachers. And so in order to continue to offer that to students, which is part of our school accountability, is middle school, middle schoolers earning high school credit. We don't want to deny that because we, we are assessed on that by the state. In order to do that and accommodate the large number of freshmen who also need to take Spanish one, we would like to buy out Heather Doubles prep and she has agreed to do that. And in our CBA, it's outlined that one day of covering another teacher's class during preparatory period would be forty-three dollars. So to buy out her prep period for a hundred and eighty days would be seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars as a stipend for her. And she has agreed to do that. We're thankful for that. And it's a, a cost-saving measure for us instead of having to hire additional staff.
What does the substitute pay per day?
That is a good question. I would have to look up the answer too, but I believe it's around eighty dollars. Camden is going to look it up. I think it's.
I think we just, we just moved that. Yeah, we just moved ninety or, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions on those?
You may have to stop by Heather's room and get her a Monster every once in a while to keep her going.
Okay, we'll jump back down to action item A.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
You ran it out.
Very standard.
Any other questions from, on item A? I need a motion to approve the Indiana State University affiliation agreement.
Make a motion to approve the affiliation agreement as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Head Start MOU.
Okay, this is a routine memorandum of understanding with Kokomo School Corporation for students in our district to attend Head Start preschool. There have been no substantive changes from last year's agreement with the exception of a slight increase in the cost for transportation, which would be pretty standard.
I need a motion on the Head Start MOU.
I mean, we approve the memorandum, memorandum of understanding. A second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Steffing Stone's group agreement.
Okay. This is an agreement for a contracted service. The service provider gives us a speech and language pathologist. Her name is Allison Rainey. And she is an employee of this particular group. She would work with us and our students for speech and language therapy at a contracted rate of seventy-five dollars per hour. It is very difficult to fill speech, language, pathologist positions. They're, they're pretty expensive and this was the cheapest option that we had to have someone in person in our building. We can, you know, the option is out there to do virtual therapy for speech and language for students, but we're talking about kindergartners, first graders, second graders, and that is really not the best way to do that for kids. And so this is the best option that we have to get a live in person, someone from our community that lives in our community, to be in our building with our kids.
This is a new agreement?
This is a new agreement and it is for this school year only.
But it's not, we've had these positions. This is not like we're, we haven't.
Are these people in short supply or they just don't want to work for a school?
It's tough and we're not the only district experiencing these problems, so.
Yeah, I need to get a motion on the uh, presented agreement.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Stepping Stones Group.
Second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Foreign exchange students.
We are asking that you would approve the attendance of two foreign exchange students with us this year. Miguel Angel from Spain and Petra Bassani from Brazil and we thank. Um, the host families who have agreed to um, bring those kids into their home for the school year. Um, we do have, I think, six other students who are still looking for host families in our area. So if you know of anyone that would like to open up their home, Robin Whaley thanks you greatly. But um, we would ask that you would approve these students to join our student body for this twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yeah, we need a motion for our foreign exchange students.
Make a motion to approve the foreign exchange students as presented.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go to surplus items.
Okay, um, in your agenda, you have a number of items listed there, all from our band department. Um, these are outdated, some of them are broken, um, extremely worn percussion instruments that. Uh, Mr. Snyder and Mr. Rogers are requesting um, the ability to dispose or sell those items. Um, and you have some cost estimates there next to, next to each item of what they're worth. Um, very nominal amount, it's less than three hundred dollars. Um, so he is asking for permission to dispose of or sell that property.
Need a motion on our surplus items.
Make a motion to approve the items as surplus from the band.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll go to Ivy Tech MOU.
Okay, this is yet another memorandum of understanding um, with Ivy Tech for. An additional pathway, so this is for the ATEP program. It is an automotive tech pathway. With Cherya Automotive Group and I, uh, Ivy Tech out of Logan's Port. Um, we have a few students that are attending that and so that MOU outlines. Um, the agreement for students that take those classes with Ivy Tech.
You need a motion on our Ivy Tech MOU.
Make a motion to approve Ivy Tech MOU as presented.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
So, how many you think, how many kids do we have in that program?
Less than five.
And they will place, at least one of them?
Yes, so they will work most of their day at McGonigals. And um, they go through that whole tech training program.
Right on site, right.
Right on site, yeah. Ivy Tech oversees the instruction of that program.
Any others?
Is it at McGonigals or down at Tipton?
I thought it was, well, I thought it was at McGonigals. I thought I read McGonigals, but maybe it might be at Tipton. It's Cherya Automotive Group.
It says buttoned down in here as well. Now Rex has got it.
We appreciate those partnerships though, um, in today's landscape for work-based learning.
Any others? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Donations.
Um, this last uh, donation is for um, two hundred dollars from uh, Mark Hudson. Uh, with uh, Herb Jones and we appreciate the donation to our athletic department.
Alright, need a motion for our donation.
I move we accept the donation as presented and thank Mark Hudson for that donation.
Yeah, second.
Got our motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It's time for public comment of non-agenda items. Is there any other public comments? Board comments?
Have we heard anything from the Shiloh group about the? The uh.
Lifewise?
Yeah.
We have had meetings with Lifewise, um, very positive meetings, so they are going to restart. Their seventh grade program and that will be at Shiloh. Um, no, I take that back. I believe that will be at Kokomo Zion and then they're going to have um, this. The fourth grade start at HES and NES, um, we're looking at that. Late this semester, um, since it's new, they are working on getting their staff in place. And um, we are working, our schedule is, they wanted to kind of settle into their schedule. And so the fourth graders then will go to Shiloh and have their own program there, so we're excited to partner with them. Um, they have been great to work with and uh, we'll, we're not sure yet what our numbers are going to look like, but they were able to be at our. Middle school orientation and we've given out all of our information once uh, to those parents. Once we get this, the fourth grade program finalized, then we'll, we'll get that information out to parents as well. They did, they did. They've worked really hard to get enough staff. Um, in place to drive those buses because they have to have their CBL license and get supervision. Misty Howell is the director and I think that's a newer staff person. She's tremendous. I've known her for a long time through the community and, and uh, trust that she's going to do a great job with that program, so.
Any other board comments? You need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Welcome aboard, Michael.